Board of Supervisors meeting for July 12th is now back in session and we're going to be going to Agenda Item Number 8C, an informational presentation by the Renewable Energy Development Institute, Ready, on the new statewide Energy Upgrade California program. Sponsors are Supervisors Hamburg and Smith, and so I'll go to Supervisor Hamburg if he'd like to comment on the item before we go to the presentation.
Well, Madam Chair, I had actually wanted Mr. Rutledge to come and talk to us about some of the programs that have existed in the past with respect to funding improvements, both in energy conservation and alternative energy and also water improvements, I believe. And this program has been scaled down a little bit due to some litigation that occurred about around the issue of residential upgrades, but there still is a program that is being utilized in Sonoma County, Lake County, and hopefully soon here in Mendocino County as well. So, I'll just let Mr. Rutledge take over. He's got a slide presentation and then probably some time for board questions.
Very good. Thanks a lot. Thanks for having us here. My name's Keith Rutledge and I'm one of the co-founders, serve on the Board of Directors of Renewable Energy Development Institute. We're a 501(c)(3) nonprofit corporation. We were founded in 1990 and basically we have a pretty broad scope of energy and water and clean air transportation kinds of issues, but we basically are trying to focus on local actions, but we also have a global client base. We've worked internationally and nationally and we're really focusing right now on Lake and Mendocino Counties with energy efficiency and water efficiency because it's such a need right now. And so, what I'm going to be talking to you today is about the Energy Upgrade California Program, but I thought I'd just take a moment to give you a little more background on where, who we are and why I'm here. Many of you might remember 20 years ago, the Solar Energy Expo and Rally in Willets, and we held a number of those. That was Ready's really first big program, and that was a trade show combination, education, science. We talked about financing. We had an inventor fair, a lot of really neat electric cars rolling around the county 20 years ago, you know, sort of before our time. We moved in that, from that direction off into sort of a science kind of direction with U.S. Forest Service, doing some fire risk reduction work. Ed Burton was part of that, and we developed some small tools for working out in the forest, doing fire risk reduction and upgrading the materials to help pay for that work. So, we've got some things we can do in that area as well. But really, financing has been one of our key hallmarks, things to do with energy, costs a lot of money, and so what we're real specialized in is finding incentives and various credits and also good low-interest, long-term financing programs to help pay for these kinds of measures. And that's really at the root of Energy Upgrade California. And then finally, we're currently doing the Home Energy Link Program. This has been five years in Willets. We just got renewed for another year, and we just started a program in Fort Bragg for the coming two years, and that's the Home Energy Link Program, linking homeowners to existing low-income weatherization programs. And I'll talk a little bit more about that in the context of Energy Upgrade California and how those two meld together. Just one thing to point out, there are a lot of existing programs in our county, and quite a few of our population meet the income guidelines for these programs, so they're not really low-income when you look at our county. In fact, about 70% of the population meet those income guidelines for free weatherization services without the financing and incentives involved. So, one of our special challenges is finding opportunities where we can get people plugged into the right program, and we do that with the help program by finding the right program for the customer. And currently, we've served about 60% of the low-income population in Willets in that five years, and we're still growing and heading towards getting them all. As Supervisor Hamburg mentioned, you may remember, some of you, over a year, it's almost two years ago now, we came to the county and we got a resolution passed to support a proposal from the Integrated Regional Water Management Program to form the North Coast Energy Independence Program, seven-county reach, and this would have Ready serving Lake and Mendocino Counties as the program administrator, and then the Redwood Coast Energy Authority for the balance of the seven counties. The California Energy Commission actually awarded that program to that group at the time, but as Supervisor mentioned, Riverside sued the state. They were not funded as one of those projects, so they basically didn't think that was fair. Long story short, the Energy Commission, which is actually Department of Energy money coming through the commission to the state, decided that they would spread the money out throughout the state. Well, of course, what that means is the smaller you are, the less you get, and so what we had as a seven-county region was a very substantial program. What we've ended up with is a very small piece of that, but nonetheless, it's worthy and something that we want to follow through with. It does involve retrofitting of existing businesses and homes and government, so we can utilize the funds for all those different sectors. And it also involves a financing aspect, which I'll talk about, the property-assessed Clean Energy Pace Financing, also called AB-811. You might be familiar with that. Sonoma County has a program in place with that, and I'll talk about that in a few moments. The partnership for Energy Upgrade is between the California Energy Commission and the PUC. Now, the Public Utilities Commission, basically ratepayers pay into the rate base for various programs, so this is an adjoining program. They join together Energy Commission and the PUC to promote these utility programs. So, you have taxpayer money and ratepayer money basically being utilized at the same time with more or less the same purpose of letting people know about all these incentives that exist and how to utilize them, how to take advantage of various financing and other types of incentives that are available. But the goal in this one is really oriented towards homes primarily, and then secondly, to businesses and government sector. So, you'll see a lot of residential focus in the program, and that's for a reason. The California Energy Commission's main goal is to get a comprehensive whole-house retrofit program where the entire house is looked at as a system rather than individually taking one little measure and doing them one at a time. And so, that's sort of the technology side, whereas the Public Utilities Commission has been more focused on trying to provide cash incentives as to how to make people more likely to do those things and implement those measures. So, this program, Energy Upgrade, you'll see it's a web-based kind of program for the state. There's a web portal at energyupgradeca.org. If you go to that website, there's a place where you can put in Mendocino County into the browser, and it will pop up a Mendocino County screen. That Mendocino County screen has local information on it, like the city of Ukiah, Ukiah Electric Programs, which are additional to PG&E programs, so we need to work those together. And then there's also places for customers to look for contractors, and contractors can get listed on this website. And I'll talk about a training program we have coming up for contractors. Also has access to financing, various types of financing programs, and of course, all the incentives. So, even though this is web-based, it's supposed to be simple. We have a challenge in Mendocino County, as you're well aware of, people not necessarily having easy access to the Internet. So, we're a high-touch community, you all know that, and that was part of our negotiations with the Energy Upgrade Program, is we needed to have some other tools to work with, like some of the workshops and things that we're coming up with. What you'll see when you go to the Energy Upgrade website, again, we'll primarily focus on residential, that whole-house system approach. They found that health and safety and comfort are really primary drivers for a lot of people when they're investing in their home, not just the savings, so there's other features. But we know that from past experience, energy and water measures cost money. We have to find a way to make it affordable for people. The good news is people are already paying for water and paying for energy, so there's cash flow there. It's just a matter of how to turn that into cash flow that saves energy and saves money at the same time. On the residential side, there's a pretty significant rebate package available, up to $4,000. We'll be featuring a home in the Ukiah area that had the, what they call the advanced package. They spent about $14,000 or $15,000 total and got $4,000 in cash back right away. So, that's a pretty significant chunk of money to buy down the cost of that equipment. And there are some requirements of how to do this. Contractors have to be certified to do the testing in and the testing out, and we have Apperson, here, Mr. Jim Apperson here locally that does that work right now in Mendocino County. And we're trying to train up some other contractors to come in to service that as well. The basic package includes the kinds of things we've all know about, of just sealing the house very well, putting in more insulation, insulating your ducts and make sure they don't leak. And very key, as you're sealing the house up, is to make sure there's no combustion and no emissions that are going to be dangerous because you do have appliances that are putting out emissions in the house. So, we need to really make sure, and that's a big part of the training, that whatever we do, we leave the house in a safe condition. But these are sort of the basic things that have been done for a long time. The advanced package moves into a more science-based approach of, rather than just prescriptive measures, it actually analyzes the entire house and does a much more thorough job of finding all those little air leaks and putting together an entire package that does the best equipment combined with heating and cooling, as well as the envelope itself and all the lighting and such. And there's a certified contractor requirement for that program under the Building Performance Institute, the BPI certification. And again, we only have a couple of contractors locally that do that currently, and we're working on getting training programs to train up more contractors. And that's part of where the college is also involved in this, of getting some training programs going. And then you can see some basic, there's sliding scale for the rebates. So, you know, this is really, the root of the program is the residential sector. However, given the constraints that I mentioned earlier about, the fact that we have a very geographically diverse population, we only have a small portion of the population that's in the natural gas corridor. A lot of these measures have to do with natural gas savings, and since the funding's coming from PG&E, there's really not a propane program, if you will, or a heating oil program. So, we're a little constrained in finding real opportunities with that natural gas corridor, none on the coast, none in Lake County. And even within that corridor, if you look at Ukiah, you have the Ukiah electricity overlay with PG&E gas, and so there's a little bit of a mixed incentives. And so, again, one of our goals at Ready is to put those two programs together to serve the citizens of Ukiah that have Ukiah electricity and PG&E natural gas, so they can take advantage of the program as well. But the income aspects also, as I mentioned earlier, 70% of our population, pretty much throughout the county, qualifies for free services. So, part of the program, we need to find people that qualify for free services rather than trying to talk them into spending thousands of dollars when they can get things for free. So, this basically narrows our target population for what Energy Upgrade's really about as far as residential outreach. On the other hand, we have a huge amount of opportunity for commercial, agricultural, government buildings, all these other larger consumers. And when I talk about Sonoma County in a minute, that's what they've found. The largest volume in Sonoma County for their financing program has been in the commercial sector, not the residential sector. So, there's a much bigger opportunity for commercial groups to operate. Now, Supervisor Hamburg mentioned that currently the Pace Program is limited to commercial only. There's federal legislation moving through to allow that for the residential sector. There were some current concerns in the mortgage industry that having that lien on your property, because basically this is like a self-assessment where you assess your own property, so you are putting a lien on your property that is superior to mortgages. It's just like your tax bill, and that's what makes it a good program. But by the same token, it gets ahead of the commercial lenders, so they were concerned about that. That's being addressed in legislation. It should be resolved soon, but right now, there is, Commercial Pace is still available, and it's, as we were talking about, Sonoma County has a program. Los Angeles, Sacramento, San Francisco are all working on programs, and then Lake County is considering a program August 16th. They have a public hearing to institute a commercial program, and I would like to bring that to Mendocino County as well. So, that's one of our outcomes. So, next steps, we've been coordinating with all the various existing programs. You're probably familiar with the Energy Watch Program. That's the Community Development Commission. They're in charge of a lot of these PG&E incentives for the residential and commercial and government sector. So, we've been coordinating with Energy Watch. There's also the Housing CHAFA financing, which is being offered throughout the county. It's 3% financing here in Mendocino County, 0% in Lake County, so that's available. It takes a certified contractor to work on that, so again, we need some training. And then Community Development Block grant funding is available in the county unincorporated areas and in the city of Fort Bragg. So, these are really special financing programs that have very low interest rates, including another one I'll throw out, which is free or 0% financing on a PG&E, pay-on-your-bill financing for commercial customers. So, you know, again, financing is key to this. So, while we're looking at doing Pace program financing and we want to develop that, the interest rates have been more like 7% in Sonoma County, 8% for this program in Lake County. So, they're not, you know, the super-low rates, but it is a very good program for, say, a businessperson to put that financing against their commercial property rather than having to go through all the income and credit qualifications they normally have to do. It's an easier access to financing to utilize the equity in their property. A lot of events like this one, we're having our kickoff meeting on July 20th. I mentioned at the bottom of that, but we've been going out and talking to directly contractors, to all the program providers, to government agencies like yourself, to make sure we're linking all this together. We're trying to bring programs, training programs, to the area because most of them are in the Bay Area or in Southern California, and that's been a challenge here. But mostly, we're educating businesses and non-government organizations through workshops like this throughout the county. We've been to, for example, North Coast Opportunities, has a lot of clientele that they can bring the help program to. We've worked a lot with those folks. The Mendocino Energy Group, that you might remember your working task force was put together. We've been polling those folks for technical and government advisory kinds of things, and so we'd look to the county, want some involvement with you over the coming year in helping with workforce development in particular is a big aspect of that. Mostly, we're working through affinity groups, churches, social organizations, because they can talk to their clients and put us in touch a lot better than any kind of direct advertising programs can do. I mentioned propane as a challenge. There's a solar-water heating component that goes along with this, and certainly, solar-water heating is something that people should be looking at. It's a very cost-effective technology in addition to the solar-electric. So, I really want to draw your attention to the kickoff meeting. This is our first public meeting, July 20th at Mendocino College, from 10 until noon. We've got Supervisor Hamburg will be there speaking, and in addition, we have representatives from Chesbrough and Thompson will be there. The college president will be speaking. We have a panel with PG&E and our group talking about financing, so it'll be an informative day from 10 to 12. And then, our first training program is July 28th at Mendocino College. It's an all-day training, start in the morning session is financing, and the afternoon session will be the participation training that's necessary to get the contractors listed on the website. And we have a really good sign-up going for that right now, so we'll probably do more of those. And that's basically it. I'm here to take some questions and got a lot more info, but I know you're praying for time, and I think I kept it to my 15 minutes.
Good job, Keith.
Thank you.
Supervisor Pinches.
Keith, in the North County, and as we all know, the natural gas pipeline ends in Willets and there's none on the coast. People, especially like the Aquatic Center in Fort Bragg, could really, that'd probably make the difference in that surviving and maybe having. Is there any push to, I've been told that that natural gas line is only 40% utilized? And so, is there any push to try to get, you know, that, you take about, like, senior citizens, people on set incomes, that's really a tough nut to crack in the wintertime to pay their huge propane bills just for heating, you know? And if, is there any push to get natural gas, which, first of all, looks like we're going to be using natural gas for hundreds of years. There's tremendous amounts of supplies. So, it just makes, I mean, solar is all fine and dandy, but in some places, it just doesn't work. Is there any push by anybody to try to get PG&E, to try to expand, extend that natural gas line, maybe to Fort Bragg and to Leightonville or areas up north?
Well, you know, honestly, I don't know the answer to that. However, from my dealings with PG&E, I mean, number one, they're under a lot of problems right now with their natural gas system, as we're all aware of San Bruno and many other places, that they've had some natural gas issues. So, they've been really tight, just in working on this one program around energy efficiency, has been really tough to get buy-in on anything to do with legal anything. I've got a feeling, though, it's geography as much as anything, is that getting from where they are now in this day and age, to get a pipeline to the coast or get a pipeline up to Leightonville is probably a pretty substantial capital outlay for not capturing a whole lot of customers. So, again, I'm just knocking off the top of my head with that, but I would anticipate that the ratepayers-
But I mean, you know, the federal government-
I think there's alternatives to that, though.
The federal government's spending a lot of money in subsidizing just about everything in energy right now.
Right.
I mean, it seems to me like that would be a great place to start, if we could get-
Absolutely. Well, you know, I know that the whole world is moving, for example, liquefied natural gas has become a big deal because transporting gas is tough. If it's in a pipeline, it's gaseous, it's a big pipeline, it doesn't push much through. Once you turn it to a liquid, then you can put it on a truck or a train, you can transport it on a boat. So, there may be ways of looking at using natural gas, but not necessarily extending the pipeline, but giving distribution through compressed natural gas or liquefied natural gas might be another way to handle that, to go after it in a little more cost-effective manner.
But I think it-
But I agree with you that that's-
People have told me it costs three to five times more to heat with propane than it does natural gas.
That's right. And the same with electricity. Anybody who has electric heaters is spending three or four times the amount on electricity. So, it's a huge one, and that's where, you know, we've got a lot of wood stoves, you know, which cause air pollution-related issues, and you've got to come up with the wood in the first place, and a lot of oil and other types of, you know. So, we've got some old technologies that need to be updated, and that's, I'm working right now with Propane Council is one of the groups. It's a national association of propane providers. They also have some subsidies, so they could work on making propane more affordable, especially for low-income and others, seniors you mentioned. And there's actually a utility assistance program for propane, for people to get way behind on their bill, to help catch them up one time a year. If they meet those income guidelines, they can get a cash payment that'll help pay off some of their propane bill. But that's a great point, and I would love to look into it. I'm working on some natural gas things with fuel cells right now, and so I can, I talk into the gas commissioner at the PUC, I can ask him about that.
I'd certainly like to assist you.
Doesn't hurt to ask.
I'd like to assist you any way I could to further that.
Absolutely.
Because I think it's definitely needed, especially on, I mean, that's a prime example of the Aquatic Center and their problems with the heating over there, and natural gas would go a long ways to solve their problems. You know, you talk about pipeline, it's not, probably the biggest part expense is getting the right-of-way to put it in, but I don't think that would be one of something that people really need, they're more up to, or you could even use state right-of-ways or-
The rail right-of-way might even be something, I mean, they're talking about that for fiber optics.
Exactly, right.
Some big thinking, though. We're just after insulating and putting in some double-glazed windows and getting a more efficient furnace or air conditioner, those kind of things, because no matter what fuel you use, you want to be most efficient that you can, and then you can add on a little bit of solar or whatever as you can.
Supervisor Hamburg.
Yeah, Keith, when Sonoma County rolled out their AB-811 program, they put a lot of money behind it.
Yes.
Like, tens of millions, if I understand-
It was a lot of money, but I don't think that much was-
And they used that to make loans. Was that correct?
That's right.
For commercial properties.
And residential.
And residential properties. And they had good participation.
Absolutely.
That they have.
So, I think it's a $50 million loan pool right now.
Do you know where the money comes from?
$50 million loan came from the Water Agency.
Yeah, you know where that money come from, the Water Agency?
I know, it came from our lake.
From selling our water.
Yeah, I know, I know. And it's interesting, I mean, so Sonoma County does it well, you know, Sonoma County's a big county, you know, obviously have a lot more resources than we do. But it's really interesting to me now that Lake County is going into this program, and you know, that's a lot more our size.
Yes.
So, what are their, what are their goals? What are their intentions with respect to this? What do they hope to do?
To just back up just a little bit into Sonoma County, because they were a real trailblazing group, and so Rod Dole there really took that on, the treasurer, and did a tremendous amount of that work. And they've been very successful with that, and they're getting good, secure returns on their money. So, they're even looking at some retirement funds and other kinds of money going in there because they're able to earn like 3% on their money rather than like a half a percent or something. So, but you do have to have the loan funds to loan, and more importantly, you have to have some capital to set the program up in the first place. And that's what this program originally was designed to do under the North Coast Energy Independence Program, was pay for all of our staff time or legal and what it would take to set up a financing district in Mendocino County to do this. Now, what's happened is that there's a group in Energy Upgrade Renewable Funding that can offer that kind of program, and they're working their way through the guidelines. But meanwhile, there are other offerers of this Pace financing, because there's no exclusive to any of it, to that. There's a group called California Pace out of Southern California, and they have now something like 37 different cities or county organizations that have agreed to their process. They pitch it as a no-cost process. They already have their financing authority set up, and they will do the legal work to bring your jurisdiction into that financing authority. It's a public financing authority that they basically have taken to use as for this program. They also cover staff costs for all the origination processing. They have the loan funds initially, and in addition, they can even put a little surcharge, if you will, on those financings to help pay for any local staff. If you wanted to do some promotion on your own as part of the county or as other staff, like a nonprofit like Ready doing some things, there's a way to, you know, make that kind of thing work. The goal of the county from the original is the same as the goal here, which is jobs and economic development and lower energy costs and cleaner environment for our citizens, and that really is enabled through this type of financing program. And again, Sonoma County saw, they ran it up to $50 million within a couple of years. So, there's a big demand. We expected, we were going to have about a $5 to $6 million loan pool for our area, and we figured that would run out within a couple of years. And so, you know, it's not as, on the same scale, but it's still for us. That's a lot of local business. And so, I think that the reason that California Pace went to Lake County, just turned out there was a person that lived in Lake County that knew one of the supervisors, and so it was more serendipity than any, than target marketing, if you will. But they fully intend to branch out into other areas, so it's a logical move. And I was at a meeting, at the June meeting, when they talked about this in Lake County, and they said, "We definitely want to come and talk to Mendocino County." So, once the August 16th public hearing is held, that should make it official for Lake County. It looks like that that probably will be approved. Then they'll be looking to expand that program, and we should certainly-
So, California Pace would come here and make a similar presentation to this board?
That's right.
And we could determine if we wanted to spit in that kind of program.
Right, and I had, I sent you their PowerPoint. I think that you've got that, it's into a couple of you, and also the staff recommendations based on that. So, they've done some homework for us already, and again, not that you have to take their work, but it certainly helps. And then, Sonoma County does have a pilot program. They're still interested in helping foster a program here, but they don't have funding that would help us do that infrastructure work. And so, our concern about that is that we might not be able to pull out our own money or have our own loan funds to do that kind of program. So, there is sort of an easy-button approach. I don't really know anything good, bad, or indifferent about California Pace. I can't really tell you because I don't have experience, but you know, there's a lot of regulations out there, so I wouldn't be too concerned if you had good due diligence that they would have a viable program for the county. And we could get started with, you know, getting some contractors to work and some homes upgraded.
Yeah. I think this Mendocino College component is really critical, the training part of it, you know? And I'm really glad that Kathy Laner, Kathy Laner, is that her name, the president, is real involved in it, and Orion Walker.
Yeah, and they've got a whole green certification program for training for the industry for sustainable technologies in general. So, it's another thing to train our local young people or even middle-aged people on how to retrain to get into some of these jobs. Because, you know, energy is one of those fields. I can tell you, being a professional in the field, that my business has not slowed down, and neither have most of the groups I work with. Energy business has continued to grow and develop even in these tough economic times, and that's because everybody is spending money on energy, and energy prices have not gunned down, you know, and they're not going to go down more than likely. So, you know, that's one of those things where we just need to take that cash flow and put it to better use, doing something more efficient and keeping it local instead of shipping it out to shareholders somewhere that don't live up here. We can do that. And so, there's a lot of really neat things, but you mentioned the training is very important for that. The financing is an important piece for that as well. And just our outreach in general, getting the community on board with understanding that there are things they can do when they're, instead of just turning off their furnace and sitting there in the cold, which a lot of people have had to do this year. It was a particularly bad heating year, and you know, you're choosing between food and fuel, and you know, it's a tough choice.
Keith, I remember your efforts working with Roland Sanford on getting the entire
regional process going forward. So, it truly was, and the county spent a fair amount of time partnering with you and some others to try to bring that forward. So, it really was truly tragic when that funding was yanked, because I think there was clearly the momentum at the time, and the dollars were there that would have helped us jump-start it. We couldn't afford it like Sonoma, and that was what, I mean, it was really a fortuitous situation that the monies from the federal side came to the state and that they had the vision to see, yes, if we help local communities jump-start this, that's a good use of these dollars. And so, seeing the demise of that was, it, you know, it really set us back, I think, regionally. And I think it's important to note that it was, that my understanding of it at the national level was that it really was some of the national banking interests that really derailed this, because they didn't want the small, an aspect of localization to really take hold. Savings Bank was on board, you had local funders. We had a good system that we were preparing to roll out in a number of months when the funding, you know, met its demise. So, do you see any point in time where that opportunity will come against? If there's, is there going to be an economic component that's going to parallel the legislation going on in DC that's going to then make it acceptable for the home, for the home mortgages to be able to have this type of lien on the property? Do you see that there's going to, that those two things will ever line up in the future?
Yeah, yeah. I think a couple of things, just to back up a little bit to your comment. There were sort of two things that happened simultaneously, and it's a little bit confusing, that the federal government said, "We don't really want Pace on residential mortgages because we're having a mortgage issue," and that sort of slowed down residential Pace-type programs across the country. At the same time, this money came to the state, and we were awarded the contract. Riverside COG got together and said, "You didn't fund our proposal," and so they sued the state. And that really was, that was fundamentally why we didn't get our money. Wasn't because we wouldn't have been able to do residential Pace, but we will still have our seven-county program. But that was, that was what got thrown back into the mix, because basically, politics came to play and said, "No, we want our share too," and that's what got it mushed around. Now, back to the federal legislation, there are components of it. One of the issues is that trying to do what Sonoma County did as a trailblazer, is they were trying to create a mortgage market, if you will, in a tiny little location, even though Sonoma's pretty big. They still, to sell those bonds into the bond market- though Sonoma's pretty big, they still, to sell those bonds into the bond market, looked like a small player. You know, bonds are in the hundreds of millions of dollars typically, and so even to get to $50 million was, it took them a couple of years, and that's just sort of starters on bonding kind of capacity. If we have a national program that's nationally recognized and sanctioned, that'll open up the capability for an easier path to that bond market, meaning smaller players like Mendocino County can really have a play in that market at similar terms, and hopefully at much reduced cost, because we don't have to set up all this infrastructure for one little program for our population. I think in the long run, certainly there will be a statewide pace program if it's not national, and they probably, given the legislature, I would imagine, will let individual states do what they want to do with the programs, and it would make sense for California to have a statewide pace program that we all, you know, worked into, and that got our bond capacity up to the point where we could get really good bond ratings, and have an infrastructure that could easily deal with, like what we're talking about, sort of the no-cost approach. And that's one of the things about timing right now, that with renewable funding, and Sonoma County's program, and this California PACE, you know, there's several providers trying to get to that market, and eventually, there may be a state agency that takes care of that. The California Advanced Transportation, and let's see, Alternative Energy Advanced Transportation Financing Authority, CAEFA, is on board with this proposal, and they have bonding capacity as well. That may be the statewide agency that works, and some of these other organizations may just roll up into that in the long run. But right now, I don't know, and obviously, legislation is, you never know. So, you know, Lake County is going to go ahead and move into their program, because they can see immediate benefits for it, so whether the county decides to do that or not, we'd have to look. But I know that I did just get some updates on that legislation, it is moving through on the federal level, so we should certainly watch that and see what the provisions are going to be.
So what'll be the top two or three takeaways for people attending the meeting on July 20th? Why should they be there?
Yeah, well, there's so many good points about that. I mean, obviously, the college is promoting their programs, and I think that's really something for everybody to know in Mendocino County, that our college is taking a really aggressive approach to sustainable types of programs and training, and if you look at the college itself, they have a large photovoltaic system there, they've got great programs and classrooms and facilities, they've got a demonstration home, you know, so it's a real gem in our, in our community, we need to promote that. And I know that the legislative people that'll be there, whether Chesbrough or Thompson or Supervisor Hamburg, will talk about the higher-level good of jobs, economic development, environment, and such, and all that is absolutely necessary. For me, it's the financing aspect, though, because that's what people normally say is, "I can't afford to do this." And once you realize that if you're paying whether it's $100 a month or $1,000 a month on your utility bill, that you can convert that into real improvements in your property that reduce your energy bill, and use the savings to pay for that, and eventually, it pays for itself, and then keeps paying for itself over and over again, making that easy for people to do, to find access to that, to qualify, that's what our programs are really about. So the combination of the incentives that are available with the financing that's available, and the fact that people are paying so much in energy, that we see that that's just a huge market, and the flip side of that one then means people will be spending money, so now our local vendors and contractors can take advantage of more work, and that puts more money back in our community, so the money that they're not paying off to go outside the community stays with the local people, circulates, and we know the multiplier effect of that. So I think that's really, from my perspective, the main takeaway, is that it is affordable, it's available, it's access to it, we have staff to help people do those things, because just filling out all the application forms and following through with that is just such a hassle, that people end up just not doing it. And so it takes that personal, as we call the help program, is that we literally hold the hands and walk them through however much they need to make sure they get from the start to the finish, because so many things happen along the way that you don't complete those things unless somebody is there sort of advocating for you.
Great. Let's go to public comment on this item. Anyone wishing to address the board on this topic? Okay. Any wrap-up comments?
Well, I hope you'll join us on the 20th, that's 10 to 12, and then if any of the contractors out in the world are listening out there, the 28th is our contractor training, and we definitely will report back to you and let you know how that goes.
Supervisor Pinches.
Just a short note on energy. Gasoline is 33 cents cheaper in my district than it is any place in the county.
How'd you pull that off?
We create a little competition up there.
You didn't hear Janine's comment.
Keith, thank you.
Keith, thank you. Thank you for coming.
That's what happens when you create competition.
Is that the hemp cars?
No, I'll give you credit for that.
Keith, I'll talk to you later this week. Thank you.
Thank you. So I believe we're going to need a little bit of setup time on the next item, but would the director be able to discuss with us the director's report while the setup is occurring? Or does the director need the setup?
Certainly, it's about that.
Madam Chair, ladies and gentlemen, the board, Howard DeShiel, Director of Transportation, I've submitted my report in writing, so I'll respond to questions if there are any.
Board members, we're on item number 6A. Supervisor McCowen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Could you expand a little on AB 720 and exactly how that's going to impact you? Because I think it not only will apply to new construction, but also where a road has deteriorated so badly that it's considered reconstruction, more than just going in, repairing the surface. That's going to come into play, isn't it?
Yeah, it's really uncertain at this point what the law will be, but one thing that happened a month ago, that had never happened in the two years this bill moved forward, is the organization that was proposing the bill actually talked to the county engineers representing, they're working with Deanne Baker. So we're able now to really, you know, try to forge something that works for everybody, and that had not happened for two years. So I think the opposition from all the counties finally drove the other group to realize, "We can't ram this through." So we really think we're going to come up with something that's fair to everybody and gives them some assurances. There were a lot of misunderstandings. For instance, they were, they thought county crews were doing all this millions of dollars of work, and they were surprised to find out that the engineering inspection and administrative fees for projects were being shown as like county crew work, and they didn't realize that. And obviously, they didn't want to stop that, because that's what makes a contract go forward, you know? The department does, you know, anywhere between $3 to $6 million a year on average, and, you know, year before last, a lot more. So we're talking, and as I say in the report, I think now we're really down to a point where it's going to be, you know, it's not going to be a problem for us.
Although it will somewhat limit what you're able to do now, correct?
It'll, it'll set some limits, but really limits that when you look at the numbers we've been doing anyway. They've been looking at numbers that were distorted, and they thought meant one thing, and they really didn't mean that. So, you know, I think it's going to be fine.
Thank you.
Supervisor Brown.
Thank you, Chair Smith. Also, Director DeShiel, on the, in the very last sentence, you're asking that we lift opposition, is that official action you're requesting?
You know, I didn't have time to really make it official. If they come out with a new bill from committee, I could agendize that and bring it back, but at this point, as soon as CSAC removes opposition, it'll probably vote through, it's going really quickly. And I, you know, for what it's worth, as Road Commissioner told Deanne that I'm okay with what she's negotiating, I'd like to see it in writing, and then we could really agendize it, and I would at that point, once we had something in writing, but it may happen before we even get there. You know, it may just happen, so.
Okay. Any public comment on the director's report? Okay, I guess we're ready to move forward on item number 6B, and this again goes to the Department of Transportation to introduce the item.
Yes, again, Madam Chair, ladies and gentlemen, the board, Howard DeShiel, good afternoon, Director of County Transportation. You received a copy of the Design Community Environmental Organization's report that they did for us. They probably won't want to toot their own horn, but this consulting firm has done work for MCAG. They were the firm that did the work in Leightonville, that put together a master plan up there that resulted in the Caltrans 101 work. They also have done work for the City of Point Arena that resulted in their master plan and a successful Safe Routes to School application last year. So through redevelopment agency funding, and I don't see Steve Duncliff here, but we wanted to do something in Calpella. The Air District also wanted to see some work done to the school, which was actually outside of the redevelopment agency, so we've hired this firm. And John Hikes is here with me today, who was the principal, who did the work, and we're really hopeful that this will be the foundation for things like what happened in Leightonville and is happening in Point Arena, to maybe, you know, make some improvements in Calpella. So I will let John go into his presentation, and then I'll, we'll be available for questions afterwards.
Hi, everyone, my name is John Hikes. Again, I'm a landscape architect with Design Community and Environment. We're a planning, urban design, environmental planning firm in Berkeley. And we had James Sukney work with us, he's the project manager from the Mendocino County Department of Transportation. And we also had on our team Mark Thomason Company, civil engineers out of Sacramento. So we worked closely with them to do some field investigation and get a good base map going for this project. Like Howard said, this was funded by the redevelopment funds, and Calpella is within that redevelopment zone, so location of two schools. It has the characteristics of community that could greatly benefit from some redevelopment, reinvigoration, some enlivening of that intersection there, that is essentially the center of that community of Calpella. So we were looking to increase pedestrian circulation and safety, and then really reinvigorate the businesses that already exist there. We, of course, as urban designers and landscape architects, went up and spent a couple of days, two site visits up there, to spend the better part of those days looking at how the area is used, how pedestrians are using the area, looking at the building stock and the existing commercial businesses that are there, and really focusing on the way that students are getting to and from school, because as Howard said, this was a little bit of an impetus to look at a Safe Routes to School grant application, and to really have that be as part of the driver for it. So we were looking at the students, you can see in this image here, with the existing condition of North State Street, it's just sort of an open, soft shoulder, so you don't have anywhere for these students to be walking back and forth. So there's a bit of a pedestrian auto circulation conflict, and it's a really wide expansive area. So we wanted to focus on that. Here's a bicyclist who is coming from this area, North State Street, as a designated bike route, but as we understood it, people are really using East Side, Calpella, on the other side of Russian River. Calpella sits right at the intersection of North State Street and Moore, so it's a perfect opportunity here. Moore Street is a connection to Highway 101, and then also a connection to the Russian River. As I mentioned, we work with Mark Thomason, a key part of this, and a key part of what the engineers from the Department of Transportation wanted to see from this project was base mapping, accurate base mapping, looking at a survey in January 2011 that did an aerial topographic survey to really identify what it was we were working with, and we wanted to make sure we weren't just going off the cuff with these ideas. So we got parcel data and right-of-way data as well, so we were aware of where the property lines were, and what we were dealing with if it turned into more of a redevelopment aspect, where we were looking at private properties. As it turned out, we really stayed within the right-of-way and focused on those Safe Routes to Schools and pedestrian access, and really looking in that public right-of-way. So again, while upon the, on our trips, we looked at context and analysis of the area, looking at the land uses, the colored map here you see is just trying to identify residential versus commercial. Heavily-used road for trucking, this used to be the site of three lumber mills, and now two of those have closed. But still, this is really an important intersection for the trucks accessing 101 and continuous flow up and down this North State Street from Ukiah. Wanted to see where the folks were hanging out, where's the activity nodes. The access and views up and down Moore Street are pretty great as you come into the Calpella community from Highway 101, and then obviously, the access and views of the river. So a real great opportunity to see the river and be a part of the area. Looked at crosswalks, minimal if any, there are some, but they do get worn off pretty quickly from the heavy truck traffic. Vehicle travel lanes, two, north and south, one not north, one southbound lane. Again, it is a designated bicycle route, and we wanted to focus on, as everyone always does, even in a rural community such as Calpella, want to be sure we count the number of parking stalls and what's being utilized there. So we took that into account. There are 98 current spaces. It's hard to identify those parking spaces because they're not always striped, it's a little bit casual there, but we tried to identify what we thought were considered parking spaces there. It's a stop-controlled intersection, and if you can see that here, it's also looking at the different access points and the various things that are going on in this intersection. It happens to be the activity node, it's also where all the vehicle circulation's happening. So there are some issues that we talked to stakeholders about, people who own businesses there, where there has been some collisions with pedestrians, no casualties that we are aware of. We also did, with Mark Thomason Company, they did their own field review, and that is small, because it's not really that fun to look at unless you're trying to identify where all the utilities are. So through that field survey, the topographic survey that we got, they went into the field and located all the points of connection for gas, water, and storm drain, so that we were aware of those as well when we were coming in and doing designs for improvements on the street. North State Street, both of these streets are 80 feet right-of-way, but they currently use about 25 to 30 feet of that right-of-way. So we wanted to be clear on that to understand where the private realm began and the public realm ended. And oftentimes, businesses may think that they're parking on private property or parking on their property, and really, that's part of the public right-of-way. So we wanted to be clear on that as we moved forward. We did meet with several stakeholders while up there, met with the owners of the Laundromat, Superec Grocery, just tried to get a real sense of what their issues were going to be, the owner of Club Calpella and the restaurant, a popular place for many people in the area wide. And we held a community workshop and tried to get the word out to people. We sent up flyers that looked like this, and also translated them into Spanish. We got about 25 people at the workshop, eight to 10 of those were Latino residents. Excuse me, at the workshop, we came prepared with two alternatives, and what they were doing is trying to look at different options for parking in the area and different ways to handle pedestrian circulation. While we were there, we wanted to have those two concepts looked at, and then get preferences from the community. I thought it was a pretty successful workshop where people really got down to business and started to tell us what it was that they wanted to see, and we got a lot of ideas out of the community members that were there, that we had not put into our alternatives thus far, and we've included those in this preferred alternative. So the preferred alternative is up on the screen. It does provide a combination of parking. We felt like we wanted to go forward with a diagonal parking option in front of the commercial businesses, but then some of the businesses that already exist, for instance, the Laundromat, already has it set up as perpendicular. And there was this fear or concern that by moving the diagonal parking lanes into the public realm, that he would then lose business or lose parking. So we worked with that to try to maintain the number, and there's no net loss of parking in the area. We've developed a design that has about 100 formal parking stalls, that is to say, where you could think, where you would not be aware at present that you could park parallel, we've developed parallel spots because of the curb-to-curb design that we've developed. We've created this curb-to-curb that has 12-foot travel lanes along with the 5-foot striped Class 2 bike lane. Sidewalks are on both sides of the streets for access, and then we wanted to create a north and south gateway to really signify that you're coming into Calpella. Folks are familiar with what that is, really signifying that you've entered in, particularly when you're coming from Ukiah on the, on North State Street, all of a sudden, you're in Calpella. So we wanted to sort of give a visual that you're coming into Calpella prior to accessing the intersection there. And then something we felt was important was looking at an open swale, green streets almost, design idea. That's currently what's happening now. The asphalt is shaped like a valley gutter collecting stormwater that then goes to open ditches or ravines. So we wanted to open that up again and look at that, and not to try to put everything into a storm drain system that then would be taken right to the Russian River, but try to maintain the aspect, the rural nature that's going on there, and create a green streets concept, almost. So here's the central part of the design at Moore and North State Street with the Superec on this corner here. And essentially, we're just reorganizing what the Superec and Club Calpella have going on there already, providing diagonal parking, and then creating this bulb-out pedestrian plaza here at the intersection. We had Mark Thomason study the designs that we did with our turning radiator to make sure that we were still accommodating the trucks that would... that we were still accommodating the trucks that would need to be using the area. And this is the design that we were able to accommodate all types of traffic coming through this area. So what we have here is the green streets concept with these swale designs at the front of the curb walk and the sidewalks continuing all throughout town. Being careful to address curb cuts and driveways for the existing properties, particularly properties that have very little development on them now and would want to redevelop it in the future. Here, again, some of these property owners already had private sidewalks. They're about six-foot sidewalks on the existing building with the cover over. So we wanted to assure them that they would still have that. So what we did essentially is widen that by another four to six feet so that then you have a comfortable 10-foot sidewalk, part of it within the private realm and part of it within the public realm. Here's an artist's rendering of what Superec could look like. The Superec really, I think, is indicative of the area and it's got this great facade and we in no way wanted to take that away from the area, just only to enhance it. As we've mentioned, this was really an impetus for safe routes to school. So we took the project up Moore Street to Calpella Elementary. Calpella Elementary, we met with the principal, has over 400 students now, I think, because two other schools had closed and then those students were funneled into her school. So it's a very high population going to this one school in the area. We also have Waldorf School, which is off of Third Street here. So there's a lot of student activity. Students come on buses from outside the area to the Waldorf School as well as to Calpella. So we wanted to make a continuous access point, continuous sidewalk for safety from the school. Internal improvements would be necessary as well, but create a sidewalk that goes all along Moore Street, crosswalks painted on Third Street, and then continue down on North State Street to a high-density apartment complex that's at the south side of the project area. Other ideas that came from community members that were there were to create access points. Here's an existing stairwell that comes off of Faclum where if we worked with the property owner as a separate project, to open up the fences of the school and to really allow better access off side streets. Again, here's another one, north of the apartment complex, where you could get through to the school up the hill. So again, with the parking, North State Street, north of Moore Street, looking at perpendicular parking, here's the L. Antrocon, and looking his parking, just pulling off the existing condition that he has here and putting it in with the street. The Laundromat maintaining that, but providing a sidewalk with a rolled curb so that he can still access that parking. One of the complaints, if we took that off of there, was that people would have to walk too far with their laundry. So we wanted to be sure that we kept it as it was existing. And we think that this is a viable option for that. And then with the diagonal parking concept, as you would know, when you're coming from the south going northbound, you have easy access into those diagonals. But then the concern from the community was that we weren't equalling that out on the other side. So now we've provided southbound direction diagonal parking as well. And so we've tried to equal out those numbers so that there's equal access to the businesses Bus stops. MTA has a transit line that comes through here and we wanted to relocate those, to consolidate them in one specific area. The stop for southbound was relocated to Hopkins Street intersection with a bus bulb and the potential for additional bus shelters. Here's a shelter that is at Third Street where a bus drops off for Waldorf School and we thought that that kind of aesthetic would be a good opportunity here to then also create further gateway elements within the area and identity builders. The northbound stop is just south of Lindbergh Lumber and we also provided the same condition with a bus bulb out and the potential for a bus shelter. So gateways, we identified some things that people might have interest in, whether it be a stone column or recent work on the old Highway 101 in Cloverdale where they did their own median approach for gateways and we could do something similar in there as well. And the community identified these two as being options that they liked for the area. We would encourage the community to be part of it and to have some element of their design aesthetic within that, within that gateway design. And here, lastly, is the green infrastructure. The ditches or the swales that exist in Calpella today don't exactly look like this pretty greened-up one here, but with some reengineering and some design, they could. And so that was the thought that we had where you could do street trees more on a rural aesthetic to have these in the planted swales. Lighting was a big issue for community members there and they wanted to see a potential opportunity for it. We identified some styles that we thought would be appropriate for the area, but that they could possibly also be solar, which I think would be really a good opportunity for Calpella here, given the weather here and also the potential lack of funding to get light conduit connections to this area. So we also broke them out into seven different areas and the real impetus was for getting these two packages here. We called them Package 1 and Package 2, just looking at this area and this area so that we would have a good identification of how much it would cost to do these improvements. And that would be part of, again, the Safe Routes to School grant application. Within the document, we identified other state and federal opportunities for funding that could be gone for, for this type of project, but really felt, as Howard said, with our success, the Point Arena's success in securing that grant application for Safe Routes to School, I think, again, with these two schools in this area, this is a really good way to get this project going and have this become the framework after that's implemented. So the key here was to create a base map and a framework and a master plan that then the Department of Transportation could take for grants, but also continue to design development and have the potential for additional grant funding opportunities in the future. Any questions?
Questions from board members. It was a great and thorough presentation with a lot of elements that you delineated. I thought it was good. Supervisor Brown.
Thank you, Chair Smith. Do you have any of the handouts with you at all? We have a couple of community members within the audience that were not able to attend the workshop and I sure appreciate giving them a copy if you do have any.
A copy of the report? Or the handouts, the alternatives that we developed?
Yeah, the handouts that you had at the workshop.
I may have some in my notebook, yeah.
Okay.
Also, John, could you go back a slide to the, to the, ooh, that's way too far back. The slide just before the last one that had the, I believe those handouts might be posted on the M.DOT website still too.
Oh, okay.
So we can, we'll try and get them, if they leave me their contact information, write down an email. We could even email those to you. I just wanted to say a little bit about the packages. Now, obviously, this work was done for the redevelopment agency with a look to the lighting and the landscaping. Safe Routes to School is going to pay for the bricks and mortar, you know, curb and gutter and sidewalk and crosswalk type improvements. And, you know, actually, the budget that would hook the residential people as far as bricks and mortar might get us all the way through Package 4, which would be good because there's a lot of housing on the east side of the street as well. So, you know, DOT is obviously going to focus on that first with those grants because that's what it'll pay for. The other thing that I did bring up at the public meeting and I want to remind the board of, we know that the redevelopment agencies have, you know, they, you know, there's some question as to what their power will be going forward. And there are grants out there that may even build some of the lighting or landscaping, but it's important to note, and the community needs to remember this, that those sorts of landscaping and lighting will have to be covered by districts set up to maintain them. And so it's real important and I hope that, I think the community heard this and I'm glad to hear there's some folks here, it's almost like Leightonville, an Allison Purnell or a, you know, a person in the community that really owns this and wants to see it go forward because the community's going to have to want it. But we really think that we could get Packages 1 through 4, at least the curb and gutter and sidewalk there and parking arranged. And then, then, you know, other grants and other opportunities to do the landscaping and lighting would really turn Calpella into a picturesque place. So those were my final comments on that.
Did you ever decide on a sign design or where it might go? I know there was discussion with them.
We decided where they would go and then just had those types of aesthetic treatments that we thought were appropriate for the area.
Okay.
But that would have to be further design developed. The packages are in the back of the report and the civil engineering was done by Mark Thomason, so they took a cursory look at what they thought it would cost to get that type of infrastructure in. And then we did the lighting and landscaping. And I think you would want to take some, you would want to go into design development a little bit to be sure that you gave provisions for lighting if it was to come online in the future.
Do you know if, I'm trying to think, if the Calpella Water District, I know they do sewer as well, would they, do they have the ability to expand their services, like for lighting or?
They wouldn't have the latent power.
Well, they would need permission of the voters. That's the big thing there. The voters that would be assessed would have to consent.
Sometimes they're very specific to their duties. Other times you have like community service district that can branch out in all areas.
Right. And I think if those who are taxed consented, then they could do that probably, yeah.
Okay, Supervisor Pinches.
When a district's formed, they're signed right then whether they have latent powers to do this and this and this.
Exactly.
And I don't believe that the Water and Sewer District would have the latent powers for a lighting district. To go through a lighting district, first of all, it's going to have to, you're going to have to propose what the district, it's a whole process to create a district. You got to propose the district boundaries and then you got to take it to a vote and get the two-thirds vote and all that to even form the district. Then you got to go to another vote to set the tax rate.
I understand that. I do know that some of the old-time districts, though, have the ability within their legislation and what the voters pass to expand their duties.
Yeah, they call those latent, latent powers.
Right.
Is what the proper term is. They could have, but I doubt it. Be worth researching, though. You could.
Let's go to public comment. Anyone from the public wishing to address this topic? Please come forward. Please.
Good afternoon, all. I'm Lois Lockhart and I rant in Calpella. And I've discussed this with Mr. Gentleman here, McDott. And I am very, very concerned about the traffic, the safety issue, and I didn't see too much in the presentation regarding safety. We all know, and I'm born and raised in this area, coming off the freeway down the Calpella School, you know, that's a straight shot. People get off the freeway, zoom, zoom, and stop sign, you know. And it's a four-way, thank God, it's a four-way stop, but there are so many people walking back and forth. There's a lot of people walking, there are a lot of children coming and going, parents walking with smaller children going to the grocery store and back home. I'm in the apartments that's sort of south, the kitty corner across from the Lindbergh Lumber. And anyway, I'm concerned about the parking, the diagonal parking in front of the apartment complex. I have been totally, if it weren't for the grace of God, you're looking at a miracle where I'd have been wiped out at least five times that I know of. The diagonal parking is very, very dangerous. I don't know how it got past whoever built, constructed the whole thing. You cannot see unless you're halfway out there because like the small pickup, sure, but they have a long bed. You still have to get your nose out there to see if there's someone coming. And then there's that little grocery store there, there are people jumping there, pickups and zoom, they're out there, you know. About that time, you think everything's clear and then there's people coming around the corner from the forks. So I want to see more safety. Thank you.
And, and if I could, through the chair. In fact, these improvements have been shown through studies to really calm traffic. The ball bouts that Mr. Hikes discussed, the, you know, the planters, even if we don't get the landscaping in them, but the narrowing of the street. Right now, you've got an 80-foot right-of-way that was an old state highway. It feels like an old highway and the drivers, the traffic treat it like an old highway. In fact, if we were to make some of these improvements, it would feel more like a residential community, which it is, and traffic would, you know, calm as a result of that. So really, the overarching, and maybe we missed it because it was apparent to the designers, the overarching goal is safety and calming traffic. So I, just, so Ms. Lockhart understands that.
Supervisor Brown.
Thanks, Chair Smith. There was a lot of discussion about Moore Street and specifically the trucks and using their brakes and, that are so loud and jack brakes, I think they call them, and how they were going to take care of that safety issue. I know it was discussion among many of the families there on the open house.
It seems hard to believe, but making it feel more like an urban little town will in fact slow people down and make it feel safer. I know it's strange, but drivers respond to that. And right now, it doesn't feel that way to them. It feels like a highway and they treat it like a highway.
Sure, come, yeah, sure.
As a former tribal administrator and someone that's familiar with Indian Road System and so on, and I've sat on the Native American Advisory Committee at Caltrans, then I'm well aware of traffic safety and transportation issues and specifically here because I'm born and raised in this area. But my concern is, is that we don't have the average citizen driver in this area. I know how to drive that area and I don't need all the pretty stuff around me to drive safely because I'm an experienced driver and I have quality, common sense. Number one. Number two, again, and I don't mean to disagree, but I will respectfully disagree with you, sir, that putting in certain things here is still not going to really, really, really get the attention of the drivers, of people who come and go in our community. And what I'm concerned, and there are many children in the complex where I rant and I have to watch for them, you know, sometimes I can't see them over the hood of my car and they love to play right at the front entrance. God only knows why. Maybe that's because there's a nice little lawn there, I don't know. But it is, I'm telling you all, it is very, very dangerous.
I think I did brush over the safety aspects of it and I apologize, I was trying to go quickly. But one of the things that will help with that, Ms. Lockhart, is the sidewalk design and just having sidewalks in general will give those pedestrians and those students and children a place to walk. Right now, it's an expansive 80-foot right-of-way that has no designation of where you are to be. So I think what Howard's saying is just in terms of narrowing down the right-of-way, from an urban design standpoint, it does start to reduce travel speeds because you do feel as a responsible driver that the area is getting narrower. And then for designating areas for pedestrians, I think that's really the utmost importance in the project is to really have those routes of travel for pedestrians so that they can get safely back to, to and from school. And, I mean, I showed an image that I think really just identifies to me the issue here, which is this image here. And this is just every day. And so you've got cars traveling at 40 miles per hour and just people able to walk wherever they want to walk. So just to provide them with a designated space, it will be, it'll improve the safety of the area.
Supervisor Pinches.
What, if you go that map, what is the parking proposed to be in front of the, on the north side of the Superec going to the lake? What, is it parallel or diagonal?
That's over where the laundromat is. That's where he's?
No, 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 going right at the Superec, between the Superec and the bridge.
Yeah.
This stays the same as it is today.
Well, you know, that's kind of a problem because you have a lot of people, they take that route to go to the lake and they're pulling boats and whatnot. There needs, the parking needs to be to accommodate because in front of the Superec there, you got to, it's, you got to come in straight in. So it's almost impossible for a pickup or car pulling a boat to get in there. It needs to be some, because that's, that's the Superec's main business is, it's not local, it's people going to and from the lake.
So we had some really great input from community members and what we did. And the reason I didn't mention it is because it would not be able to be done through redevelopment because it's on private property. But here, within- But here, within this public realm, the piece that we did was left three spaces for long trailers to park in front of this parking lot.
Okay. Just as long as there's something to accommodate that.
By Club Calpella, yeah.
That's a, there's just a lot of them that use that.
In the future, it would be great to have Hopkins Street and access, you'd have to work with the owner of Club Calpella and Sandy Procelino, the owner of Superrat, I believe, to have this access point at the back of the property. So, you could come in here and access this point and then continue on. So, we tried to create this private circulation that would allow for large trailers to come through there. And the owners were on board with that concept.
The owners were at the meeting, so they're, oh, good.
I believe there was someone else from the public that said they wanted to speak, so you'll need to come forward to the microphone.
I'm Kate Testa and we live in Calpella. We live across from Mendocino Forest Products and Mendocino Forest Products has provided a lane for the trucks to go north. Their trucks are not to leave the mill going south. They all go north up by our house. And I don't see why you couldn't, you know, why Granite, who has a lot of trucks going through Calpella, McFarland has a lot of trucks going through Calpella, and I don't know why you couldn't work out something like Mendocino Forest Products did to make the trucks go up the hill and stay out of downtown Calpella.
Well, through the chair, I'll try to answer that again. Howard DeShiel, Department of Transportation. There's a real good chance that when a use permit was negotiated for the use at Redwood Lumber, that that was a condition of the approval of that use permit. I'm not certain of that, but there's a real good possibility of that. Otherwise, you know, traffic has a right to utilize the public road system and unless, you know, those companies were voluntarily asked their drivers not to take a certain route, or unless there was a permit condition of a particular development, we don't really have the jurisdiction to limit their use.
Supervisor McCellum.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Director DeShiel's is correct, that was a condition of the use permit that they were seeking at the time. They had to construct the acceleration lane and right turn only.
Okay.
So, that underscores the importance of getting the right infrastructure in place when a project is being constructed or expanded because that's about your only opportunity to do it without the public entity having to pay the freight.
Yep.
Supervisor Pinches.
Well, there's another option. You can always go to the trucking companies, ask them if they could voluntarily, like use another route like McFarland that comes out right south between the apartments and Club Calpella. If you could ask them to make a left-hand turn and go down to Lake Mendocino Drive instead of turning right and going through Calpella and up by the school. Just ask them. Say, would you do this?
Worth a try.
Okay, Mr. DeShiel, any wrap-up comments?
No, I think if there's no other questions, we've got another presentation.
I just had one quick question. Yeah, the major funding for this is anticipated to be the safe routes. Is that correct?
Well, we're looking at safe routes for packages one through four, the what I call curb and gutter sidewalk, the hard improvements. There's other, a litany of funding they've identified in the report, they've done a good job, which would include the same kinds of funding that was used in Leightonville, possibly transportation enhancement. And there's a number, possibly even the redevelopment agency or possibly even private, you know, development, redevelopment that is conditioned. So, there's many ways it could be funded. My point was to the lighting and landscaping, it's really going to take something besides transportation, safe routes to school. It's going to take the community in some kind of effort.
Well, that certainly makes a lot of sense. But I just want to say, I'm really happy to see this come forward. Because I've had, I've had kids in the, grandkids in the Waldorf School for the last 10 years and so I've walked around these neighborhoods a lot and walked from the school, the Superrat many times. And it's just, it's not a safe situation for kids. And, you know, I think, I think Ms. Lockhart's concerns have to be taken into account, and everybody's concerns indeed have to be taken into account, but this is an area that really cries out for some improvements and I'm just glad to see something moving on it. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You bet.
Thank you. And while staff is setting up, I understand there's some changes you need to, need to take place for item number 6C. We'll go ahead and we'll do item number 10. We're going to move forward agenda item number 10 while they're doing the setup.
I move approval of the slate.
Supervisor McCellum is moving approval and we have an updated list. I'm assuming you're referring to the updated list? Okay.
I'll second.
And a second on the updated list on the slate from Supervisor Hamburg. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none. Item number 10, the appointments to boards and commissions passes unanimously. Ms. Angelo, is there going to be a 5B report, a legislative report today or no?
Not today, Madam Chair.
So, I didn't know you went bowling.
Yeah, I practiced until they took the bowling alley out before practice.
You've still got one going and you can send them over here.
They might be older. They might have.
I think because...
If Carrie asks them, they will.
But they need these people to run for office. Yeah, should ask. They have one seat that's just kind of up there.
Can't ask them.
I have a term of meetings. There's about 30 of them.
So, Mr. DeShiel, are we ready for item number 6C?
It looks like we are. Again, good afternoon, Madam Chair, ladies and gentlemen of the board, Howard DeShiel, Director of County Transportation. With us here today are representatives from Omni Means who did the report that I believe is on file with the clerk to look at. And this is the, again, redevelopment agency-funded master plan for the really congested area down on North State Street between the Highway 101 interchange and roughly McDonald's there at Empire and Ford Road. And they've got a lot of extensive work here, a lot of slides, which I've asked them to go through very quickly. And with that, I think I'll let them get into the technical part of the presentation and then we can entertain questions at the end. I'll let you gentlemen introduce yourselves.
Thank you. Ross Ainsworth, President of Omni Means, who is principal in charge in the project. And with me is Kamesh Vedula, also with Omni Means, who has been the project engineer throughout this project. I wanted to start by thanking Howard and thanking you for having us here today. We were fortunate enough to work with a really good PDT, which is their project development team, which consisted of Howard and Larry Alexander, Steve Ford from the Department of Transportation, and Ben Kajiyama from the City of Ukiah who was involved too, since this project does tie in and interface with the City of Ukiah at the south end. The project area that we're dealing with extended from just to, basically to the south of the Ford Road Empire Drive intersection where heads down toward the City of Ukiah all the way up to and including the intersection, the northbound on and off ramps to US 101. The principal intersections of concern therefore were the two ramp intersections, well, three actually, including the southbound off ramp, the southbound on ramp, the Kuki Lane intersection with Lover's Lane coming in very closely spaced, and the Ford Road Empire Drive intersection. And as you can imagine, these are all congested locations.
That was a pretty old picture there you had, right? Don't show that motel there at the top right?
That one there?
Is that the motel?
Yeah, that's the motel. The parking lot's here and the motel's actually just off the side there. To start the project off, what we decided to do and what we do on most of the projects where we're looking at multiple potential improvement alternatives or concepts, is to develop a need and purpose, which becomes in the event of a future environmental document, becomes a guiding sign for that particular document. In this particular project, we addressed these six issues as the primary need and purpose of guidance for the project. Public safety, consistent with the county's general plan, facilitating goods and movement, there's a lot of truck traffic going in and out of that area, improve public transportation opportunities, enhance the aesthetics of the environment, and finally, to enhance pedestrian and bicycle access and facilities through the project corridor. There were also nine different evaluation criteria that we used to evaluate each of the concepts, using the need and purposes, the guideline for each one. Public safety, right-of-way impacts, community impacts, which would be to the neighboring businesses particularly, design standard conformance, meaning both the county of Mendocino standards as well as Caltrans standards when we're up around the US 101 interchange. Cost of the improvements, transportation operations, and transportation operations deals not only with motor vehicles, but also with pedestrian and bicycle activity through the corridor. Environmental, we did a fatal flaw analysis with an environmental specialist, looking at the alternatives. Sustainability, which is a project or a component that we're including in all of these decision-making processes now, as sustainability is an important component on any public expenditure. And finally, aesthetic opportunities, because if you've been up in that area, you probably are aware that it's not the prettiest part of the county. We held our first open house, which was what we call the blank sheet open house. We bring in graphics of the area, the board showing what the project is going to be, the outline of the project from this point forward. And we asked those to participate to make comments to us about what they like, what they don't like, what their concerns are about the way the study might be conducted, what they want to be sure is addressed. We had a total of 26 comments that came out of that February 17th open house and they're categorized as this. Three of the categories came out very strongly identified by the participants in the open house. The aesthetic opportunities, the public safety issues, and transportation operations became the critical elements as the public saw it as in this project.
And public safety would be primarily collision avoidance type of things and pedestrian and bicycle safety?
All three, correct. And that's the way, in fact, I'm going to get into how we're turning this into a project that involves all those particular components. Go. Aesthetics, these are some pictures that were taken on our first visit. This was about the time of the February, we had a lot of rain, as you recalled during the winter this year, but it's not a very pretty street. There's no way to present in any other fashion.
It looks better on a rainy day, though.
It's true. As far as safety goes, the street is a half a mile segment roughly between north ramps and Empire Ford. There's been a total of 67 accidents in that region over the last three years. That was the years were the last three years of record, which were 2007 through, eight through 2010. Seventeen of those were injuries. What this is, is over twice the statewide average for roadways of this nature. In a more of a commercial context, four-lane roadways, the accident rate is extremely high out there. So, it's something that we need to be very aware of as we go through the process. And last, transportation operations. As the supervisor mentioned, we were dealing with level service of motor vehicle traffic through the corridor, but also looking at the facilities for pedestrians and bicycles or lack of facilities for pedestrian and bicycles and how they would be accommodated in any of the plans that were developed as well. What this project turned into then was really a complete streets project and I'm sure you've probably, some of your supervisory workshops have been watching and hearing about the complete streets components. Legislation has been introduced in Washington, it's been introduced in Sacramento to require that projects of this nature take into account more of a complete streets nature. So, and what is a complete street? Complete street, historically, the way we've looked at roadway improvements has been kind of one way. How does motor vehicle traffic operate? And that's the single focus. However, with complete streets, we're looking at bikes, we're looking at pedestrian facilities, we're looking at landscaping, and of course, we're looking at motor vehicle transportation operations and safety as well. Complete streets have the benefits, make economic sense in that they deal with all these categories. They improve safety, they encourage more walking and bicycling, which has the potential of having a reduction in the transportation capacity of the roadway, help transportation woes, helps with children, good air quality, and again, makes fiscal sense and involves all these different improvement potential categories. Typical images from complete streets, roundabouts, crosswalks, street furniture, meeting the needs of transit operators, median islands and, which have the effect of not only providing landscaping, but also of traffic coming effect on the roadway. Sidewalk opportunities, make sure you have sidewalks and bicycle facilities and both, there are both bicyclists and pedestrians along North State Street, but the sidewalks are discontinuous. The bicycle lanes that aren't where they are marked are actually substandard and those things are all part of the improvements that are being recommended today. Complete streets provide aesthetic opportunities. And now I'm going to get into the design concepts that we developed for this project. The design objectives then that we looked at were potential improvements to traffic signalization along the corridor, landscape medians along the corridor, roundabouts, or potentially all three of these in a mixture of components. A total of five traffic signal improvement concepts were developed, a total of four roundabout-only concepts were developed, and one concept was developed that included roundabouts and traffic signal improvements. This graphic shows you some typical sections comparing traffic signal intersections with the roundabout intersections. With the traffic signal intersections, typically you have the multiple lanes for through movements, turn, special right turn traffic lanes, left turn traffic lanes. They tend to take up a lot of room, particularly along the roadway with traffic laneage. Roundabouts, on the other hand, if they're well-designed, can actually, while they may take a little more space at the intersection, can actually reduce the right-of-way and the traffic lanes in between the intersections, as this graphic would illustrate. These cross-sections kind of tell you what it's like on the traffic signal intersection where you're using the whole roadway width for traffic lanes with some street trees being improvements on the side, standard five-foot bike lanes, not much room for any median improvements. On the other hand, with the roundabout concepts, because they move traffic more efficiently between intersections, you get the bike lanes, you get the pedestrians, and you can reduce the number of travel lanes through, providing room for median improvements. The ranking of the criteria then, as we went through the process, was in this order. The most important was deemed by the PDT to be public safety. The least important was the aesthetic opportunities. When we went through the entire ranking of all 10 concepts, we came out with roundabout concepts 2B as being the number one rated concept and the one that is being presented today as the preferred concept. This is looking at the entire corridor as the roundabout concept 2B would see it. Starts with the two-lane, two-lane roundabouts in all locations. We've got the, went too fast. This is the Empire Ford intersection, the Kuki intersection, the intersection with the southbound on and off ramps and with the northbound on and off ramps. Some features, particularly, go one more. I think we have one more. This is looking at the Empire Ford intersection close up. You've got the McDonald's over this corner, you've got the Shell service station here. This is the Kuki intersection with the shopping center across the way. Another two-lane roundabout.
Called KUKI. I read it as about KUKI.
Thank you.
That's kind of a Kuki name.
KUKI, excuse me. One of the things that we have recommended, and this was in many of the alternatives or several of the alternatives, was that the intersection of Lover's Lane, which now ties in immediately adjacent to the intersection at KUKI, that we would relocate that intersection and bring it into the new roundabout here opposite the southbound. and bring it into the new roundabout here opposite the southbound on-ramps. What that does is it eliminates a lot of the congestion that we're experiencing in this location over by the KUKI across from the shopping center. The access would still be maintained to the truck area, to the restaurant, and to the service station through, now instead of being a street, it would be a driveway access off of KUKI. And then the traffic coming from the west would come down and tie into this roundabout and avoid that particular intersection.
I would take mine quite a bit of private property for right-of-way, though.
No, it wouldn't actually, because the county owns the right-of-way all the way through here, county and Caltrans.
But I'm talking about the intersection by KUKI lane, up there.
Go back.
Wouldn't that take mine for private property?
There's quite a section there.
It's this one. He's talking about this intersection right here. The only right-of-way impact is right here at the corner where the Valero service station is. There would be some right-of-way at that intersection.
No, no, on this side.
On this side over here?
Yeah, in front of the truck stop there, the gas station in front of the truck stop.
No, actually not. That's actually the existing Lover's Lane coming through there.
Okay.
And the roadway continues up. So the biggest impacts in right-of-way at that particular location occur at the, right on the curb return for the service station, which would still be maintained access, but there would be some. And then across the way where you have the vacant areas, a little bit of the area of the bowling alley, and a little bit where the fence stuff, yeah.
View orange.
View orange, right. So the right-of-way impacts are in all the alternatives, whether they be the roundabouts or the traffic signals are relatively minor. There's some access issues that would need to be dealt with in the future, and that would be particularly dealing with the Shell station, more around the Empire Ford intersection than We did a visual simulation of the corridor. Now, the conditions that we're simulating here are 20/30 traffic conditions, so we're looking at, you know, virtually 20 years out with the full improvements of the alternative 2B.
This is, by the words, how do you speak? Double, this is double time?
Yeah, this is double time.
I don't see all the gravel trucks from the Granite project on-
Reminds me of looking down on an anthill.
I notice there's no power poles. PG and E can underground all our utilities in here?
In here, I would seriously doubt that.
Sure does look better.
However, the improvements to the corridor would be wise if they could be coordinated with an underground project.
Now, some trucks are going to have an issue negotiating that rather narrow channel so they can ride up on the center aisle, no problem.
That's precisely what that is. I should have mentioned that. Thank you for bringing it up. It's called a truck apron, and that's designed just that, if you get some oversized vehicles. The roadway, the roundabout, has been designed so that the truck can actually traverse it without using the truck apron. But if you did get a stray, and we have a video, if you want to see it, of a big, huge truck going through a single-lane roundabout, but that's what that is for. It's called a truck apron, and the rear wheels will ride up on it and go around without the steering wheel.
But if a truck driver can ride up on that curb, he can ride up on your hood, too.
I'm going to go, if you'd like, I'm going to go through a few slides to talk about some of the benefits of roundabouts, because roundabout alternatives came out very high throughout. And so the question is, why are roundabouts coming out so well on a project of this nature? Well, first off, what is a roundabout? You've probably seen pictures of the Arc de Triomphe in Paris. That's not a roundabout. That's a rotary. That's a rotary. This is a neighborhood traffic calming circles, and these are not roundabouts. Roundabouts, go ahead, are well-designed, and they're designed so that the traffic is guided into the appropriate lane.
Do you know a dozen years ago, Caltrans didn't believe, they didn't believe roundabouts would work in California?
Oh, I know.
That was their policy.
I know, and that policy is long gone now. They're basically roundabouts throughout state. In fact, we're working on about five roundabout projects right now.
Is the one, is the one in your district the first?
The one in Hopland is the state, yes.
Hopland, your district supervisor.
That's right.
But roundabouts are designed to accommodate all the users of the roadway, from the transit, trucks, pedestrians, and bicyclists. And that's, and the exhibits that we showed you take into account for each and every one of those. In the case of the pedestrians, we have wide-side, standard sidewalks, which in the case of Mendocino County calls for eight-foot sidewalks in commercial, which they are not now, our project includes that, includes separate bicycle lanes within the roadway. It also has an opportunity for bicyclists who prefer not to drive through the roundabout or ride through the roundabout, they have an opportunity to actually go around the Obviously, there's landscaping opportunities. This is actually a project in Ripon where we put, this is the center island, where our landscape folks did the design, including the clock tower. That's an actual photograph. This is one we're doing in Farmersville, this is one we're doing in Porterville, and that's one of, we're doing a roundabout corridor at the City of Rockland where we're doing three roundabouts sequentially right now, designing those. They're safer, fewer points of conflict, they have lower absolute speeds, they're designed to run traffic through the roundabout at between 18 and 23 miles per hour, not 30 to 35 like you do on a typical arterial. So you have to reduce speed differential, which is a very significant thing, because if the traffic's all traveling at about the same speed, your propensity for accidents is reduced. Single direction of traffic flow, it's all, roundabouts are one-way systems. And as far as pedestrians go, they're crossing a narrower street. If you go out onto North State Street today, you'll be crossing about 66 feet of asphalt pavement. On a roundabout that we would put in there, you'd be crossing about 25 feet of asphalt pavement. Twice, you'd have a center island, and you'd have an opportunity to cross, but you'd be crossing 25 feet, only with one direction of traffic to concern yourself with, and that traffic is either stopped while they're waiting to enter, or traveling at 15 to 22 miles an hour. And I've got a slide here that'll demonstrate that safety. As far as motor vehicle safety, there's 32 points of conflict in a standard four-way intersection, but the roundabout, there's eight points of conflict. So right there, you can kind of see the safety issues, go. The Federal Highway Administration has done numerous studies of the conversion of roadway intersections to roundabouts. This is the kinds of reductions that they found between standard signalized and four-way stop roundabouts. 76% of injury accidents, 90% of fatal accidents, 40% of pedestrian accident reductions, and 75% of all accidents. So from a safety standpoint, you can't beat them. They did a recent study in 2009 where they followed up with six intersections and had virtually the same results, except that the injury and fatal reductions were even higher. The reason they're safer for pedestrians? Typical intersection, you're going 30 to 40 miles per hour. This shows the chances or probability of death at different, a pedestrian being hit at different speeds. You can see at the rates of speed of motor vehicles, you're in the neighborhood of 40 to 80% probability of fatality with a pedestrian accident. When you have roundabouts, you're down in here in the 15 to 20% opportunity. So you've really reduced the risk and the danger to the pedestrian as well, not to mention the one-way viewing and what have you. Another thing is very important, and this goes back to sustainability and environmental, but emission reductions. Kansas State, which is where Kamish got his master's degree, in fact, getting roundabout studies, there's been studies done across the world about roundabouts, as you probably were. There are many more roundabouts in Europe, for example, than there are in the U.S., although they're growing here very fast. These are the reductions of the studies that Kansas State did on roundabouts here in the United States, looking at carbon monoxide, carbon dioxide, nitrogen oxide, and hydrocarbons. And beyond that, when it comes to fuel economy, when you're sitting there at a signal, your engine's idling, or you're stop-and-go traffic, you're burning a lot of gas. They found that with roundabouts, that the fuel consumption goes down. I don't know if I put that statistic in here or not. It's about 20 to 30% reduction in fuel consumption, a corridor, as opposed to a standard signalized intersection corridor, and it's because of the stop-and-go and the delays and the queuing. And speaking of delays, this shows you, these are two conditions. These are traffic signal delays per vehicle, roundabout delays for exactly the same traffic conditions. And that relates to your comfort of driving through the corridor, but it also relates to your fuel consumption, that's your emissions reductions. This is a graphic, actually, it's a simulation of a project. This intersection right here is the one you saw previously, and I was showing about designing it for roundabout. This is a 2.3 million square foot regional mall, which has tremendous traffic, as you can imagine. The distance between the signalized intersection and the roundabout's 170 feet. It operates so well that this particular project, we wrote it up in a paper, and it was submitted to the Transportation Research Board, and it was actually presented in January at the TRB. And then Kamish went to Indiana this last summer, us May, because this was actually part, one of the presentations at the International Roundabout Forum that was held in Indiana in May. One of the issues that you hear about is the trucks, and that came up a minute ago about truck aprons and can they traverse the roundabouts. There's a perfect example. But we went out, we had heard stories that the Hopland roundabout was not functioning. Somebody was suggesting that that roundabout did not function well. We went out there. We were fortunate enough, we went out there for about 20 minutes, and during that time, go ahead, we found, this truck went through the roundabout without any, never even got up on the truck apron. A second truck came through, never got up on the truck apron even, traveled around the roundabout without ever having to use the truck apron. And then there was a beer truck who we stopped and said, hey, would you mind driving through the roundabout so we can photograph you? And we took this video of this log-wheelbase truck going around the roundabout. You'll notice, again, he never even gets up on the, he never has to even use a truck apron to go around the roundabout. And that's the way trucks use roundabouts. If you get into a one-lane roundabout condition, that's the truck apron really comes in there because you can make a roundabout happen. Some fire chiefs were convinced at one point in time that they wouldn't work for fire vehicles. This was a video that we found from, I think it's Leclerc, Wisconsin. Very small, tight, single-lane roundabout. The truck apron was covered with snow. They sent their, one of their large fire trucks through it, and you'll see, once again, the truck had no trouble traversing the roundabout. In fact, again, never had to even use the truck apron. There is another way that fire trucks will use the truck, the roundabout. They have to get through, they do.
That's the way I go through them.
Now, one of the things, they're going to close with this, and that is that the roundabout concept-
As supervisor.
-is something that was not embraced by Caltrans, and it was considered to be not something that was suitable for California's dangers of urban use.
Excuse me, could you speak into the microphone?
I'm sorry.
Because it's being recorded.
Yes, I was saying that the supervisor mentioned that, you know, it wasn't too long ago that Caltrans just was blind to the use of roundabouts. And that has changed radically, and now they're embracing it. In fact, they're installing it themselves, like they did in Hopland. But the thing that you will find in the community when it's the first roundabout, there's a lot of negativity. You'll hear people, you know, they can't work, oh, they work in Europe, or they won't work here, or they work in L.A., they won't work here, they work in Rockland, they won't work here. It works someplace else, but they never work here. You will find that that negativity will occur. I'm sure you'll experience that. Thing to do is to try to address the concerns, and that's what I've been trying to do with these last few slides, is to kind of, I don't think you've been exposed to this, and I'm hoping that it's helpful. Go ahead. Federal Highway Administration did a study of before and after, another before and after study, looking at 22 locations in 11 states, and they were doing a public perception study. And before the roundabouts went in, you won't find, there was 14% that were positive. Nobody was very positive. And if you take a look at that, you got 68% that were negative to very negative. Then they went back and did the study a year after the roundabouts had been in place. You won't find any negativity. 27% neutral, 32 positive, 41 positive, 32 very positive. So when people get experienced and they start using them, because there's fear. I remember when I drove it the first time. I went to the U.K. last two months ago, and I had to drive on the wrong side of the road, and that'll bring you fear. But once you start doing it, once you've been on the road for a half hour, all of a sudden, you know, it's not, it's not even anywhere near as fearful as what you expected it to be. And that's what typically happens with roundabouts. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Brown.
Thank you, Chair Smith. I feel that was- Uh-uh, there we go. I feel that was a lesson directed at me. I don't like roundabouts. Maybe the two, KUKI Road and the one, it would be the northbound area of going up on 101. Those might work. What I really fear, I drive that almost every single day, and at Empire Gardens, there are a lot of pedestrians coming out of that residential area. I heard what you said, I'm just very leery of it. I was born and raised here, and in fact, for 10 years of my life, I was one street over on Oak Street in Vinewood Village, and that used to be our Highway 101. So it was drilled in my heads about pedestrians, especially on State Street, which was Highway 101. I'm really fearful at the Empire Drive area that goes on to Ford Road.
Down through the shopping center.
Yeah, a lot of pedestrians. And I just don't, I hear what you're saying about the roundabout, I just don't see that working there.
Okay. I appreciate what you're saying, and I understand, because I hear it a lot, and it's from here. You're talking from here, not, you know, you're not off the wall. What we have recommended, I don't know if you had a chance to look at the report that was put online, but what we have recommended is a Phase 1, because it's an expensive project to go and put in, you know, four roundabouts, relocate Lover's Lane. It's not something you're probably going to want to bite off in one piece. And what we have recommended as a Phase 1 project is the KUKI, the one you just recommended and said, and leaving Empire Ford as a signalized intersection. And because you can upgrade the signals at that location, and they'll probably function fine for another 10 years perhaps, before you get to the traffic loads, they just require then that you start blowing out the sidewalks to create more left-turn lanes, more right-turn lanes, which the roundabout would eliminate. But by that time, you'll have a constituency who has driven a roundabout, and they become somewhat used to them. And then if you wish, you can expand to the north, or you can expand, include that, or...
This is my legacy, engineering firms, 10 years, 15 years down the road. Nobody will remember who you are. My name will go on that. I'm sure Howard has an understanding of that, being from an old-time family in this county, and knowing how your name goes down on those. I just wanted to express, you don't have to convince me. I kind of feel it's going to be done what's going to be done, but I do have a concern. I'm glad to hear that the Empire Drive Ford Road will be one of the last to go in if it turns out to be the roundabouts, because that is, I think, it's a very, very dangerous area. And I think there were citizens that actually came from Empire area, Empire Village there, that expressed that that night at the Veterans Hall. They didn't talk about the roundabouts, it was just how dangerous that area is there by the McDonald's, and when cars are parked.
Okay, that's a different meaning than I was, okay.
That was part of the blueprint process that was a different process, so Ross didn't hear that.
Oh, okay.
But we are sensitive to what you're saying, and we did, as we made our recommendations and came up with a Phase 1, we realized that you're not going to do it all. There's probably no way you could afford to do it all at this point in time. And the Ford Empire would be our recommendation for the last one, anyway.
Supervisor pinches.
Carrie, don't lay awake at night worrying. We've been 25 years getting North State Street done. We've been 15 years getting East Side Potter Valley, and it ain't done yet or even close. So don't get yourself too upset about changing the intersection out here north of town.
I appreciate your comment, and I just had to express my concern.
We'll go to public comment on this topic. Anyone wishing to address the board, please. No, it's okay.
No, just come forward, say your name.
You know, I really love transportation. I love building things and making it safe. I'm Lois Lockhart, Concerned Citizen, and I fully agree with Supervisor Carrie Brown. I do not like roundabouts. I was asked to attend a special service or function for a dear friend, and I hadn't driven on Hopland area for quite a while. I'm really a highway driver, you know, straight, I mean, just give me straight, I got to go, I got things to do. And so I'm coming up, I go over into Old Hopland, and I think, what is that thing up there? Which way do I go? Oh, first of all, acknowledge the stop sign, did that. Then what? I have to go back? Oh, I see, just... It was confusing. It was really confusing. And I was, I was embarrassed for myself. I said, how could I, what is this thing? And that's when I learned about roundabouts. And there's another one up here on, what is it, past what used to be Mervyn's? I never checked that street. Never.
That's traffic calming.
I almost flipped myself there, because I stopped and turned, but that little tricky little roundabout, it's like the difference between a dessert dish or your coffee, the saucer, cup and saucer, compared to your dinner plate, you know, going around it. So it is very dangerous. I don't know, maybe it's because I'm too mature, I can't see the future.
No, you just drive straight through the middle of it.
We have a modified roundabout right in front of us.
Like the fire trucks, look less. Okay, any additional public comment? Guess not. So Howard?
I thought that was a really interesting report.
Yeah.
And I learned a lot about roundabouts. And Lois, the first time I drove on roundabouts was in Washington DC, and I was scared to death, but I did learn how to do it, and it worked. And then I got to go to Europe four or five years ago, and, you know, they're all over the place.
Yeah, they are.
And they work, you know.
That's why I don't drive in Europe.
The thing about, about just the saving on the emissions and the fuel, I mean, you know, I think those things cannot be ignored. That matters a lot.
Soon you'll be able to practice in Fort Bragg, Lois, every time you're over.
Yeah, well, you can practice in Hopland, and go over to Fort Bragg.
The reason that government embraces roundabouts so much is because in government, we're really used to going in circles.
Okay. So Howard, next steps?
Next steps, again, is funding, you know, to actually build something. Probably the first project we'd look at is to just better synchronize the signals that are there. Again, this is a 20, 30 traffic level type design, so it's for the future. You know, I might add, too, although Supervisor Pinches had a good reason for roundabouts. I'm actually very happy that in Fort Bragg, the county has participated in the roundabout, although it was difficult. Right now, the county does not maintain a traffic signal on the coast. Our signals are all in the Ukiah area, and I have to call specialized contractors out to work on them. And with the power outages on the coast, I won't have to worry about that roundabout not functioning at Simpson Lane. They work electricity, no electricity, they're bulletproof. And I can just say, from a maintenance standpoint, that's one of the biggest things that happens on the coast. I'm sure Supervisor Smith could tell you, it's just havoc when the power goes off and the signals don't work, you know. So there's all kinds of advantages, and the safety that Ross brought out, you know, so...
No, that's a good, a really good point, Howard. And I was having dinner in town, I don't know, a couple of weeks ago, so it was, it was early June, I think it was. And looked down from the restaurant in Fort Bragg, the second story, and there had been some kind of a freak power outage. And so the stoplights were out. And just sitting watching dinner, it was a family dinner for my mother, and looking down, there were almost three or four near accidents that occurred with this outage that went on for at least an hour. Screeching of brakes, and people trying to cross the highway. I mean, it was really, it was very dangerous, right downtown in, you know, the beginning of summer, so... So no funding has been identified for any next steps? We're not there yet?
Well, the report identifies possible funding, but, you know, the department would have to go through the process of actually applying for that. The report becomes a basis for that. And I'm sure, you know, we are going to share these reports with MCAG, and, you know, the tackles start to rank. Already, you know, the interchanges with 101 are identified as a need, so it could be that one of these, you know, moves forward at some point in the future for the interchange with 101, so...
Okay, great. Thank you all very much. So we're going to go forward now with item number, I believe it's the last item of the day prior to closed session, to item number 7A, Supervisors' Reports. Do we have anyone that would like to start?
I wouldn't mind.
Supervisor Amber.
Starting, Madam Chair. And are you going to handle this, Katie?
She's still in a hearing.
Still.
So I'd rather wait a little.
Oh, you want to wait? Okay. I will then defer.
Other Supervisors' Reports. Okay. Supervisor Brown.
That was confusing.
I am sorry. It's not my fault.
I would like to report that I was working with the Potter Valley Irrigation District, and we had a meeting with NOAA Fisheries to discuss the error that was made in the final fir quarter that limits the diversion due to the omission of a key table. And this is water being diverted in the spring. We do have another meeting planned with them. I attended the salmon barbecue, as well as other supervisors, and absolutely had a great time barbecuing salmon. But along with that, a lot of constituents came up to greet you and talk to you about issues that they had, or suggestions they'd like to make for the county. But I did talk with people from the Fish and Game Commission that the funds for the many organizations applying, they wanted to see that go forward. I informed them it had. And so I, if any of you, same thing, they're to go to Building and Planning Services, and Wells can help them out. And I've encouraged them to go ahead. Also, I had individuals from the Lake Mendocino Mobile Estates talk to me. I did attend their meeting, residential meeting, last Saturday, and the group of individuals that attended that were here today. The IWPC meeting has been changed. It will now be next Monday at 6:00, due to the fact, I think it's because our chair was going to be out of town, everyone agreed to change. And we're hoping that by that time, we have a definite quote and a policy to look at on insurance. The JPA, originally written mid-'90s, calls for the commission to have coverage, and it never has had it. Except now, we are going to be contracting with an individual, and so we've gone out to look, and hopefully we'll get estimates at this upcoming meeting. Also, the North Coast Regional Food Systems Network is moving forward, and we're going to have a series of meetings coming up as well. The Il Russian River Commission, I can't remember if I mentioned this previously, but it has scheduled a meeting. The last one was November 4th in 2010, and this one is scheduled for July 29th, 9:00 AM. It'll be right here in this board chambers. So the agenda will soon be out.
Thank you. Supervisor Pinches.
Briefly, I invited, and our CEO wrote to me in the Willets Fourth of July Celebration Parade. And we had a big barbecue up there, but the one thing, difference between Willets and Fort Bragg is we didn't kill a fish.
Supervisor Pinches.
You don't cut trees, and you don't kill fish.
You're right.
Yeah, it's the new Pinches.
You mean, you didn't get a horse for you and the CEO to ride in the parade?
No, no. Anyway, one thing that really concerns me, and a real disappointment, as you know, in the recent state budget, they threw in a $150 parcel surcharge, I guess. They're going to call it a fee. It's really a not voter-approved tax, I'm sure it's going to be challenged, but that cremates a tremendous tax increase. From what I understand, I'm not really sure yet, trying to research it, but some people say it's a parcel tax, and others say, no, it's a structure tax. And I don't know...
They've been talking about both, and I don't know.
But it amounts to $150 per parcel, so large ownerships and whatnot, it's a serious tax increase. And I don't know how they can do it legally, but it seems to be in there. But it sure probably puts the cold water on a fire as far as doing anything with a EMS service tax or something, because it's, you know, the thing about it is, when people get their tax bills here in December, we're going to be getting the calls of, how come my taxes went so up? You know, the county's going to get the blame, but all the money's going to the state. And I don't believe it's going to give us any better fire services.
Yeah, some of that money stayed here locally to deal with problems.
Well, another thing, too, if we're going to pay more for fire services, then I think we should have an say on how much money they spend putting out some of these fires, you know. They're spending thousands of dollars an acre putting out, a $300 an acre brush fire.
Can you imagine being a rangeland owner?
Yeah.
And having like five or six parcels?
You know, that's the downside of those, giving your state legislature only a majority vote to pass a budget.
Supervisor Town.
We're starting to pay for that decision already.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Local Agency Formation Commission met on Monday and approved contracts for, hopefully, the completion of the City of Ukiah Municipal Service Review, and also the Ukiah Valley Municipal Service Reviews. So I think the timeline is about nine months to complete those MSRs, and that'll be a great accomplishment and a big step forward to making sense out of the local planning process. The grand jury was chosen, and Carol Rosenberg, who had not been on the past year, but is a returning grand juror, was chosen as foreperson of the grand jury. And a couple of our citizens that periodically sit in on our meetings, and I see Lois Lockhart here today, and John Sack was here today. Also, Jim Hool was drawn to serve on the grand jury, so I'm sure we'll see these folks on a regular basis, sitting in on our meetings. And I hope they learn to ride better than the previous grand jurors. Couldn't help that one, but... The City of Ukiah is moving forward in reacquiring the power of eminent domain for their redevelopment agency. And although, you know, officially, they're not going to say, this is so we can deal with the Palace Hotel, this is so they can deal with the Palace Hotel. They also are in the process of making a decision of whether they're going to pay the extortion that is being demanded by the state legislature in passing the redevelopment agency bills. Their staff is recommending that they pay the extortion, which their first-year payment will be $1.8 million, which may be partially offset, and I'm not certain of this, they may be able to defer or eliminate paying $600,000 for the housing set-aside fund. So, you know, that'll be another casualty of the redevelopment process as the state now envisions it. And of course, as we all know, the move is of questionable legality and will undoubtedly be challenged in court. Supervisor Hamburg and I, as the Solid Waste Ad hoc Committee, met with county staff, and then we met with our counterparts from the City of Fort Bragg. We agreed on a unified strategy to present to Empire Waste Management for an alternate to what they had been offering. They rejected it out of hand. And so we do have a meeting scheduled, again, with our Fort Bragg counterparts to discuss next steps. And ideally, we will, again, be able to agree on a unified strategy, but that remains to be seen. And on the broadband, I believe I'll let Supervisor Hamburg report on that, because he's been the lead on that, and I'll leave it at that.
Okay, let's move forward with Supervisors' Reports. Supervisor Hamburg, I guess it's now your turn, we're at the end of the line.
Trying to get Terry.
Right, we were going to give you an update on the progress with the CPUC regarding the smart meter program. Terry is currently in a hearing in one of the conference rooms.
We could do it at the, when we return from closed session.
Right after we return from closed session?
Yes, we could do that.
She's happy to come in here, but she thinks she'll be about another 20 minutes.
And I believe the CEO said, closed session might take around a half hour, thereabouts?
So does that work?
That's okay with you?
If I may, Madam Chair, Supervisor McGowan mentioned broadband committee, BAMC, the Broadband Alliance of Mendocino County, which continues to pursue a very energetic meeting schedule. They meet at 9:30 every Friday morning at the Community Foundation. So if any of you ever want to look in and see a very functional Citizens Committee, this is a good one to check out. And not only do we meet every Friday, but we have committee meetings once a week of five different standing subcommittees. So this is a, this is a very busy group. And if you happen to be part of this group, and you're somebody who pays attention to your email, there's always plenty to read buzzing around the internet, even though some of the members of our broadband alliance do not even have access to internet at their own homes, and are having to travel to libraries and other public places in order to participate in the broadband alliance itself. So it's quite an interesting committee. I just want to remind the board, I think this has been said before, but the Community Foundation Mendocino County has offered a $40,000 challenge grant, which we're trying to meet by going to various businesses and institutions around the county that are interested in bringing broadband or high-speed internet to the approximately 50% of Mendocino County residents who currently lack access to high-speed internet. It was also announced at the last meeting that Central Valley Cable has finally lit up Point Arena again, so the Coast Community Library again has, has access to high-speed internet for the citizens of Point Arena in Willala, Manchester. CVC, Central Valley Cable, will be serving customers all the way up north as far as Elk in the very near future. So that's good news. Also, Verizon is in the consideration phase, I guess, of installing a tower in the Point Arena area, and that is being, you know, sort of the preliminary steps are being looked at in terms of what kinds of permits they'll need, both from the county and from the Coastal Commission, in order to site a tower in the Point Arena area. So, you know, things are moving forward, and we're still looking for some regional representation. So if your particular area, I think we're, I think we still have some areas that aren't covered. Couple of them are in my district, but if you know people who want to put some time into this, send them our way, because we're still, still growing.
Supervisor Brown.
Thank you, Chair Smith. Supervisor Hamburg, on that funding, do you know, I had a name I got for the committee to make this contact with USDA rural development. Were they, did they do that? Have they talked about it? Do they need some more help, or...
Was that through Brian, or somebody else?
Ashley, John, with EDFC?
Oh, John Coorey?
Yes.
No, I would think that John is probably following up on that.
Okay, if you, if you need my help some more, I'd sure be happy to do that. Okay, if you, if you need my help some more, I'd sure be happy to do that. So if you could ask.
That was with Glenda?
Yeah, but Glenda gave her person that's top in the state to contact.
Yeah, one other thing I might mention is at our last meeting, Dan Grebel, who's the Ukiah Valley Fire Chief and is the head of the Fire Chiefs Association this year, came to the meeting. Also Shannon Barney, our OES coordinator, came to the meeting. And I guess the main message, especially from Shannon, was that projects are getting funded that show coordination among all sectors, health, education, government, private industry. And I think the committee felt very encouraged at Shannon's presentation and his willingness as the OES officer for the county to work cooperatively with the alliance and with all these various groups to try to improve the situation in Mendocino County. So he was a very welcome addition, as was Chief Grebel. Thank you.
Thank you. So we'll return to Supervisor's reports after a closed session, so we'll adjourn now to closed session, returning in approximately a half hour.
Do we get a break?
Sure. We'll return in approximately thirty. Supervisors is now back in session at five minutes to five on July 12th, reporting out from closed session that the board gave direction to staff. So we'll now resume with Supervisors' reports, and I believe we'll begin with Supervisor Hamburg.
Yes, Madam Chair, I'm sure I'm not the only board member who's been hearing a lot about the beginning of smart meter installations in Mendocino County. I believe they started around July 1st. And PG&E is contracted with a company called Wellington, something, I don't know what their whole official name is, but they have been doing these installations. And I'm hearing from constituents with a whole range of concerns, safety concerns, privacy concerns, concerns about the non responsiveness, or at least the anticipated non responsiveness, of the California Public Utilities Commission. And of course, since we passed a moratorium on unanimous vote, a lot of our constituents, constituents feel that we are going to step out and do something to, to stop PG&E and to at least interrupt them. The board sent out a press release about two weeks ago informing people of the number that they could call in order to get placed on the delay line, which would mean that a smart meter would not be installed on their residence until after the CPUC meets in September and make some kind of determination about how people can opt out and what it might cost them to opt out. So I think a lot of people are calling this line. I've had people having trouble finding what is the right number to call and, and getting kind of confusing messages from the person who answers the phone PG&E's end. I actually called myself and was told, after I gave them all my information about my account number and, you know, my zip code and da, 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 gave them all the information, they said, well, we will attempt to place you on the delay list. And I said, attempt? And she said, yes, we will attempt. And I, and you know, and I went through it, and I said, well, this is not supposed to be the line about attempting, this is supposed to be the line about opting for a delay, at which point the person said to me, oh, yes, we will delay your installation. So I think there's, there's some gamesmanship going on, and I think the biggest game of all this going on is that PG&E wants to install as many of these meters as they can and kind of create a reality on the ground as far as the installation of smart meters before the PUC or the courts have a chance to do anything that might interrupt them. So I've asked Terry to come in, because Terry Gross from the County Council's office to come in and talk to us a little bit about the bigger picture around the state. Terry's been in touch with this attorney, Mr. Tobin, Jim Tobin, who has been hired by the City of Fairfax to kind of spearhead their opposition to smart meter installation. I think Terry's also been in touch with the County Council's offices in Santa Cruz County and Lake County and maybe some other counties as well, and talking strategies with them, including the possibility of injunctions, possibility of using trespass ordinances, nuisance ordinances, what have you. But I'll just let her talk a little bit about what strategies the board is currently involved in. And, you know, as you know, we have made a filing with the PUC in conjunction with some other counties and municipalities. But Terry, maybe you can just update us, and also, just importantly, update the public on what efforts we are taking to defend the moratorium that we put in place, I think, four months ago.
Before she does that, I just want to make it clear that this is not an item that's been on the agenda, or was on the agenda for today. It's only coming under Supervisors' reports, so I'm recommending that we have no board discussion or direction on this issue. But Terry can go ahead and brief you on what, you know, our office has been doing with respect to the CPUC.
I understand.
Thank you, Terry Gross, Deputy County Counsel. I don't have a lot.
I believe they need your microphone on. See if that's better.
Terry Gross?
Yes.
Deputy County Counsel. I'm sorry, I don't have a lot to report on this matter because we are in the, well, first of all, let me back up and say that we have, as Supervisor Hamburg stated, been working closely with other jurisdictions. And all of the municipalities that I've been in contact with, the City of Fairfax, Santa Cruz, Marin, are, we're all pretty much on the same game plan to address this program. And that is to focus our attention on the proceedings before the CPUC. And as far as public involvement, I would recommend that more people from this county who are concerned about the installation of the smart meters, that's the place to really direct your attention. We did file a protest, and really what's going on is, for some background, so PG&E came in to apply to modify the smart meter program and to obtain some compensation for doing that. That proceeding before the commission has been characterized as a rate setting proceeding. And so the crux of the fight right now is jurisdictions like our own and various citizen groups in Northern California want to open up what will be considered at the rate setting proceeding, which is basically would be limited to evidence and support from PG&E that their modifications are appropriate and that the amount of compensation is appropriate. So that's where the fight is really going, that's where the battleground really is today. And we have, as Supervisor Hamburg has stated, we have the city attorney from the City of Fairfax really taking, spearheading that fight. We have citizens groups from Alameda County who are participating in the proceeding, who are saying, wait a second, commission, when this license to do these programs were set up in, back in 2006, the commission had no evidence before it and did not consider the health effects on individuals arising from the installation of these smart meters, did not consider privacy concerns at that time, and that those issues must be addressed now. So that's where I think the fight is. I don't know of any other counties who are doing more than that right now, funneling their energies into the commission proceedings. What will happen is at some point, there will be a legal battle. The decisions of the CPUC go right to the appellate court. So I don't know if there's an expedited hearing, but our office has been following closely in the proceedings in San Francisco and communicating with other counties. And right now, that's where I think the battleground is, and everyone is, those jurisdictions, where there's the opportunity to do so, because like in Santa Cruz, I think they've already finished installation. So there was no, you can delay installation possibility in some of the jurisdictions. But here, and wherever there is the potential to delay, everyone's recommending that people sign up to delay installation. That's really all I can tell you. I'm happy to answer questions.
Supervisor Pinches?
Just an experience I had with PG&E last week. I was looking at my PG&E bill on my mobile home, and well, it's about 10 times what it normally is. So I got to looking at it, and the increase was on the natural gas side. So I called up PG&E, because this isn't the time of year you use it for heating or, you know, and I don't cook there. Anyway, so I called them up, and I said, I think you guys got a leak here, would you come and check it out? So that evening, they sent the, and he, come and check it out. And he went back there, and he says, well, first of all, he says, they misread your meter. But he says, you also have a leak, and also your neighbor has a leak. So.
Three problems with one call. Supervisor Brown?
Thank you, and thank you Supervisor Hamburg for talking about the phone calls. And I, I'm not going to say someone does it intentionally, but I did get it cleared up by Allison Talbot. I received a call when we first talked about smart meters, it was the Fort Bragg meeting, Chair Smith. And anyway, I had a constituent from Uva Drive call, and I never could get back with her. But she was saying there was a man outside her house, PG&E was working on this meter. She went out, very hysterical about him putting in a smart meter, wondering what he was doing, blah, blah, blah. And so he just looked at her, and he said, and it's part of PR, I think, and bad PR on their part, but he said, I'm installing a smart meter. And actually, they were fixing a gas leak. So, and reinstalling whatever they had to reinstall, which was a really good thing, because you think about San Bruno, place I've known, I remember when it was built, when I was just, well, I don't want to tell you how old it was, not very old.
Who named him a smart meter?
But this woman was really upset, and it, but it was just changing out a gas meter. And it is important.
Well, thank you, Ms. Gross. I think that we have the specifics, and so now the public, the focus should be on the CPUC in terms of being vigilant about that process, and that's where we can direct people to put their efforts.
I also really appreciate the effort that Janine, and especially Terry, put into just staying in touch with people around the state, because when people contact me, at least I can say, you know, that our staff is, you know, is conversing with others, we're keeping up with what's going on. And for instance, you suggested to me yesterday that we have a, some county participation in this, this weekly conference call that happens, that kind of strategizes about how to approach this problem. And, you know, I like the idea of getting someone from Mendocino County, or maybe two people who participate in that. So just so, so we're informed, and so people know that we didn't just pass an ordinance and then say, okay, well, you guys take care of it. And, you know, there are people out around the county who are, you know, talking about taking, you know, I want to say take the law in their own hands, but, you know, there is a long tradition of civil disobedience in this county, and I know that is being considered by some people because they've, you know, they've put that out broadly. And I just, you know, I just certainly hope that none of these situations get out of hand. I think the people have the right to, to civil disobedience if they're so, you know, determined to move in that direction. But, you know, I just think, you know, we can't, you know, we shouldn't underestimate how fervently some of our constituents feel about this issue. And the board did stand with them, and, you know, they're, they're empowered and energized, and, and they, they don't like what PG&E's doing, and I don't like it either.
Supervisor McCollum?
Well, I understood you were going to chain yourself to the first bumper.
Did you say that?
That was you, John, in the old days. I never did get into chains.
But, and I truly also appreciate the work that County Council's office is putting into this, and Terry, the work you're doing. And do we have a timeframe on when we expect the CPUC to take an action that could then be appealed to court or be the subject of a lawsuit or an injunction?
I'd have to check on that. I know there, they had, we had one, one pre-scoping workshop meeting, and there's another one scheduled, and I would be happy to find out.
And the ideas, the idea's been floated that since the county has passed this moratorium that the county could request a blanket opt out on behalf of its citizens? Is that something that would have any legal currency?
Well, actually, there's been some discussion of that, and it's not resolved, apparently.
Marin County, I think.
We're looking at, like, it would, like a multi-jurisdictional opt out. I think people are looking at that.
I think Marin is the one that brought, I think Marin County was the first county, along with this, their cities.
And, you know, PG&E is so great on PR, so they say, and they want to work with the community and all this other stuff. Well, we should agendize this, I think, for further action.
I showed them I've been without their service for 32 years at the ranch.
That shows.
That's opting out. That's the definition of opting out.
That's the definition of opt out. Supervisor Brown?
Thank you, Chair Smith. I think everyone received a letter from our Fish and Game Advisory Commission, a copy of it to Assembly Member Chesbrough, and I believe Senator King was CC'd on it, along with us. It has to do with legislation, and I think we should bring it back and maybe write a letter ourselves. But I think the real question I have here, because also sitting on AAA, they have a whole platform that they wanted to bring before our board. What is our present process? How do we go forward? I need to know, yeah.
The board adopted a policy which the Fish and Game Commission is not following, that they can adopt a legislative advocacy platform, present it to the board, we approve the platform, and then they're free to take any positions consistent with the adopted platform. So maybe we haven't clearly communicated that to all of the advisory boards, but that's the action we took.
Yeah, we do have that policy in place, and I think it was.
Policy council on children and youth.
Took, was the first one to come forward with that.
Brought forward the platform, and then we, you know, we said, good idea, and we encouraged other advisory boards.
Madam Chair, we're talking about non-agendized items. I'd recommend you adjourn this meeting.
No, it's, it's direction, so I can't agendize something.
Supervisor Brown is bringing it up under Supervisors' reports, I guess.
It's just informational, we're not making a policy, we're saying what the policy is that's in place.
So just put together from AAA, their advisory committee wants?
I think you should have staff research for you and get, get you the actual item that Supervisor McCollum is referencing, when we passed it, and then the example could be the policy council on children and youth, isn't it?
An example, okay.
Example.
And then we need to communicate on this particular one, and I guess it would be through the CEO that we would do that.
Yep, did you, that's a good idea. Okay. And that's signed by Mr. Jim Martin, is that correct?
Christine, do we have a bill meeting next Monday?
I'm not trying to make a fuss, I just.
So seeing no other business, we will adjourn to July 26th?
Wow. This is not.
No?
It is 5:15. No, oh.
Good job.
No. We don't have a meeting next Tuesday.
No, we do not?
We do not.
But we actually do have Board of Equalization, which will be July 18th.
We don't have a meeting next Tuesday?
No, we do not have a meeting next Tuesday, Supervisor. Did you want to have one? Did you want to set one now? We've already adjourned, sorry.
How did we wind up with one for Board of?